Share the screen. Would you mind coming online? On screen?
I'm so sorry, I just woke up now and I just missed today waking up with early.
It's okay. Did you happen to do yesterday's tasks?
Half, half I have done, half remains. So it's like going on. So I'm gonna cover it soon.
Anything to share from that?
Uh. As of now, uh, no actually because the thing is like half is still remaining. So yeah.
No issues. Okay. So that's wonderful that we are on day fourteen right now. Ending the second week and entering the new week from tomorrow. So today it's just like, you know, a brush through of the second week. And the mirror work since the beginning, it's all of the basic, the funder that it is talking about is loving yourself. So again, to begin with, a review of your second week. Today you review your progress in your mirror work and learn how to give yourself more time and encouragement on the journey. So you know, Rithamra, before you joined, I was having a word with Sima and that's what we were talking about. That you know, it's so very important to give yourself that little time to do something for us and you know, it just makes us feel so good because she was mentioning she has a kiddo to take care and that kid is really, really small right now. And you know, she, she's a healer. She does Reiki healing. Sima, she does Reiki healing. And she just mentioned that somehow she was not able to, you know, make time for it. So now see again, this today also the same thing Louis Hay is mentioning that it's very, very important for us to give a little time to yourself that is just going to encourage you and make you feel much more nicer in the journey of your life. Maybe Sima will try and give yourself a little more time. You will feel more confident about yourself and you'll maybe uh more active and more enthused in taking care of your, you know, day-to-day chores. You never know.
Actually even while doing mirror work, it might difficult to take out time but yes, this is what like like we make practice to take out time for others. We have to make a practice to at least take out some time for us, at least like start by five minutes or 10 minutes.
Yeah, just to begin with.
Yeah.
How proud I am of you dear ones. Here it is the end of our second week. And there you are in front of your friend, your mirror, practicing and learning each day. The many ways you can reflect more love back into your life. You deserve love and joy and all the good that life has to offer you. You may still feel a little silly or uneasy doing your mirror work. That's okay. I encourage you to be patient with yourself as you embark on new exercises each day. Change can be difficult or it can be easy. Remember that that this is a journey of self-love and acceptance and acknowledge all the effort you are making. So yes. Uh, as I mentioned before that, you know, like mirror work is all about, you know, it's, it's teaching us to unlearn the unhealthy things that we have adapted over the period of time because of our conditioning or maybe environment or whatever we are listening. And learning just one thing, that is to love us because when we will have that in abundance, we will be delivering the same thing outside as well. Wherever we will go, we will be spreading light and love. And at least we will get a clear idea, a more mindful, you know, mindful thought process we will have in handling the negative situations and the not-so-good feelings like fear, anger, you know, we, we tend to then understand how to manage that. And even though it's the end of the second week, I'm not saying that it's going to be pretty easy for everybody, like some of, like you know, what happens, like what I'm experiencing now, that every day somebody new is joining and somebody who is not regular, but Rithamra is somebody who has been regular since the first class, first session of, you know, the mirror work. So I know one thing very well that you know, some days of the mirror work is going to be very easy. You'll feel very, very happy and high. And there will be days wherein you know, you will just not be able to connect. No matter what happens, just keep one thing in mind because Sima, now you have started and you have done, you know, few sessions as, as you mentioned and I'm very, very proud of you that you heard it on YouTube and you know, you followed all of that. That's wonderful. That shows that you know, you have that thing of dedication in you. So go ahead and keep doing that. Okay. And that is going to give you a lot of confidence about you. Okay, going forward, you have accomplished so much already. You have seen how your mirror helps you become much more aware of what you say and do. You are learning how to let go of whatever does not serve you. You are becoming more aware of your self-talk. Listening carefully to your words and learning how to turn them around into positive affirmations. Yes. This is something that Mirror Work has taught us by now that at least this much, you know, I'm sure that by now that seed has been planted in us that if there is something that is not serving us for our highest good, we are at least trying or we are in the process of learning how to let it go. We will not get any award out of it just by holding it on and just thinking about it that I don't know, I just have to, you know, make sure that whatever I'm thinking. If there is something that is not serving us for our highest good, at least we have learned to let it go. And secondly, we, we have become mindful enough by now that if there is a negative feeling that is coming in us, we know how to process it, how to channelize it and how do we do that? By making positive affirmations for the same negative feeling. Okay. Your inner child was the subject of two lessons this past week and you bravely tackled them both. Give yourself a big cheer. You introduced yourself to your inner child and you are beginning to understand what this little one is feeling. You are also finding time to hold this child in your arms and let it know how safe and loved it is. I'm so proud of you for taking this enormous step towards loving yourself. Yes, we did uh two inner child sessions in this week itself and that opened uh a totally different side of you wherein you saw the younger version of you. You could meet that, you could, you know, like say sorry to the inner child of yours for not being there and then converting it into that surely that you gave it to your inner child that yes, you got your back. I'm there for you, to care for you. Yeah? This is what you know, something that we learned in the last week. Okay. After these first fourteen lessons, you are discovering how your body mirrors your inner thoughts and beliefs. You are beginning to pay attention. Okay, before I read, Rithamra, because you have been somebody who has been consistent, I would want to know what what is your belief, you know, what you have to see in this thing? Like for this particular paragraph that it's written that, you know, what changes that you are able to see in you? Would you mind sharing that?
Honestly speaking, so it has been both tough and easy doing the mirror work. So initially I was like, yay, this is very easy, I can do it. But there were days I couldn't complete the journal because I discovered lately that I was running away from the exercises because those were the things I discovered that I didn't want, it was hard for me to face myself actually. So then I made my things happen and there were days I thought that it's okay, let's skip the session, maybe I can watch the recording. Then I was like, no, I have to do it because this is for myself. And I knew that this is something I really wanted to do from long time, like connect with myself and finally I've got a chance. So the connecting, knowing myself, getting more self-aware and I already told you, I've been going through a like a different time actually, like strange and weird time, both good and both weird time. So at this point of time, it has really helped me to stay stable, be connected to myself and although I was losing my mind due to some reason, but I got back on track actually. So.
That's wonderful. Wonderful. This is what you know.
So many other things, I can go on, but these are the main things that has actually happened with me and I am able to previously what used to happen, I used to get lost and all, but right now I am on track. That's the best thing that is happening to me.
Wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. Very nice, very nice. Okay, so then if that's the case, I would want you to read from after these first fourteen lessons because then it would be like, you know, you are dictating it to yourself. That how far you have come.
Okay. After these first fourteen lessons, you are discovering how your body mirrors your inner thoughts and beliefs. You are beginning to pay attention to your body's messages. You're beginning to feed your body the loving nourishment it needs, encouraging thoughts and positive affirmations. You are also noticing how good you can feel when you can express your true feelings and emotions. Even if they are negative ones, you must also congratulate yourself for all the hard work and exercises you are doing to release your anger toward others. This is such a healing experience that can truly change your life.
Yes. So anything on this that you have to say that you have experienced from this?
This is all true for me actually. Uh, not the, the one thing I missed out, it's like like working with others, I have before, it's very uh different. I mean, like I used to get angry, I used to like why this people is doing this, why this people is not understanding. But now before that I take a pause and I understand everyone is different. There's a way to tackle things and to give positive vibrations rather than being angry and then just throwing things, but throwing words at others like, hey, you need to do this, this was not done and to go for uh like I need to answer my boss, what is going on? Instead of doing that, I rather explain them in a polite way, think, understanding the other person is also a human being.
Wonderful. So by observing your fears and addressing them during your mirror work, you have learnt another very important lesson this week. You are not your fears. Fear is only a limitation of your mind. You always have a choice between love and fear. Guys, you know, while I was doing my mirror work, right? Somehow like I have mentioned in my previous sessions also that I on the third go, I could complete my mirror work in the beginning two times, I was just not able to. And uh the very third time when I reached the day fourteenth, this particular paragraph, it really hit me. And it just changed something in me for good. I, everybody has different kind of fear, even I had some kind of a fear and I was not able to, you know, uh, let it go, like no matter how hard I tried, no matter what I did, no matter, like I tried number of things to get out of it, but I was never able to succeed. And just by reading this thing, something just happened to me and it changed. So I would want whoever is going to listen to this thing and to both of you who are present here that remember one thing, the moment you are breaking down or the moment you are trying to question your credibility, your capability and or if somebody is just like, you know, trying to put you down and uh just by listening to that, if you are somewhere questioning your own worth, that is also a form of a fear that you are letting seep inside, you are accepted. So just repeat this thing that you are not your fear. And you always have a choice. You always have a choice. Okay, so going forward, you have also been practicing one of my favorite principle this week. How you start your day is often how you live your life. It makes me so happy to now, to know you are making an effort to start your day with loving thoughts. This sets a positive tone for the rest of your beautiful day. So Rithamra and Sima, in yesterday's class, this is what we were talking about, how to start your day, how to set the tempo of your day on a good note and how things to start fold in a better way. So yes, just to remind you guys again, make a routine for yourself, like you call it ritual or whatever, but do it. Maybe it's a five-minute thing or a 10-minute thing for you in the morning, but to, to begin with, just note it down that okay, fine, but the moment I am gonna get up, I'm gonna do this. Then after that, I'm gonna do this and this and this and this and so on. Just make a small, you know, like bullet points for you. Which will just cater like what, 10 to 15 minutes of yours when you get up and I think that when we are working so hard, giving ourselves 15 minutes is not a lot what I'm asking the people to do. At least try this thing and see how it feels.
Sure thing.
Yeah, sure thing. So you gonna update me?
Yes, I'm gonna because this thing is my favorite thing actually. I, I'm on and off with this thing, but now I have a way how to be uh like how I can carry on with this thing.
Wonderful. And to make sure that you are sticking on to that thing, believe me guys, just write it first of all. That okay, fine. Today when I'm getting up, I'm gonna do this. Tomorrow, I'm gonna do this, sorry, when I, when I'm gonna get up, the first thing I'm gonna do is this and then so on and on and on and on. And you will not, I mean, you'll be so amazed to see the positive side of it is that within four, five days, you will start feeling so good about yourself, you will be thanking yourself. You will be in a different zone, you will feel a shift in yourself for good. Because you know what? You know it that you're doing this thing for yourself. Try it out and update me for sure. I will wait. Okay?
Okay.
See how much you have already learned in just fourteen days. Continue to give yourself every encouragement as you go through this new experience of mirror work. Always know that I'm here by your side. Yes? Whenever there is any kind of confusion guys, I'm just a message coming. Alright? So let's affirm, put your hands on your heart and repeat it with me. Here I am, world. Here I am, world. Open and receptive to all the wonderful things that this mirror work course is teaching me. Okay, so going forward, I, as usual, I'm gonna share the exercise, but I'm just going, I mean, in the group after the session, but I'm just reading it out. So if there is any confusion, you can ask me. Your day fourteen mirror walk exercise, find a photo of yourself as a child at a time when you were truly happy. Perhaps you have a snapshot taken at your birthday party or while you were doing something with friends or visiting one of your favorite places. Take this photo to your bathroom mirror. Talk to that vibrant and happy child in this photo. Tell this child how much you want to feel that way again. Discuss with your inner child, your true feeling and what's holding you back. Say these affirmations to yourself. I'm willing to let go of all my fears. I'm safe. I love my inner child. I love you. I'm happy. I'm content and I'm loved. And repeat this affirmation, it says 10 times. I, I will just say something from my own experience that affirm it as many times as you feel like. The moment you feel that, you know, your mind is going into some negative zone, put it back, like snap yourself with these affirmations. Say it, you are feeling bad, just at least try and say, I'm happy. I love you. I'm happy. I love you. I'm loved. And you will see a shift in yourself and gradually it will become a part of your daily routine. It will become a part of your habit and gradually it will be a part of your DNA. And by then you will be a different person altogether. Okay, Rithamra, would you mind reading this journaling for me?
So the power is within you. Your day fourteen journaling exercise point one. Take out your journal and open it to the first exercise you did on day seven. Read the feelings and observations you wrote down when you did your mirror work that day. On a new page, write down your feelings and observations today after the second week of mirror work. Are the exercises getting easier for you? Are you feeling more comfortable looking in the mirror? Write down where you having, where you are having the most success. Write down where you're having the most trouble. Create a new mirror work exercise and affirmations to help you in those areas where you are experiencing blocks.
This is very easy, nothing to explain in this thing. Your heart thought for the day fourteen. I'm willing to see only my magnificence. See, it said before that you always have an option to choose. Now you can choose to see something good and you can choose to see something bad. You know, many a times you must have noticed. Or yeah, like let's take this example. Uske kuchh galat karne ke baavjuud bhi. You know, we are always ready to forgive that person without holding grudges against them. Ya. Jisko hum pyaar karte hain aur vo banda hamare samne ya vo female hamare samne, you know, that and with pyaar I mean to say even our parents, if they're, if they are doing something wrong and we know that they are doing something wrong. Still somewhere or the other, we choose to make us believe that it's okay. Papa hai, it's okay, mama hai. We do this thing quite often. So here we have this option of choosing in the same way in the other aspects also. When things are not good and they are not our first family or they are not our someone's, you know, to whom we are very close to, still we have an option there also to choose good or to choose bad. So you know, if you will give attention to what is written because word is very powerful, you know. So if you'll see what it is written, it says, I'm willing to see only my magnificence. Such a beautiful and a powerful, you know, sentence it is that they are choosing, like I'm choosing to see only my brighter side. Ponder about it, it's something which is beautiful. Choose to eliminate from your mind and your life every negative, destructive, fearful idea and thought. No longer listen to or become part of detrimental thoughts or concern or conversations. Today no one can harm you because you refuse to believe in being hurt, even for that matter, you know, when it says that conversation part. Try it out, even when you know, uh, this is generally we have this belief. Aur koi negative conversation kisi ke bare me chali-chali a rahi hai and if we are not seeing something and we are just quietly listening to it to we are not doing something wrong and humara karma kahin se attach nahi hota hai. But the fact is, humara karma bhi attach hota hai aur hum galat kam bhi kar raha hai. We have a option always to choose something. You know, now again, this is a very vast subject to go on, you know, because me pass bahut saare examples se usko explain karne ke liye. Agar koi insan koi negative statement ko do bar se zada repeat karta rehta hai ya do tien logon se zada repeat karta rehta hai. To uske peechhe na usko solution nahi chahiye. Uske peechhe usko sirf ye cheez chahiye, usko sympathy mile. Agar aap ek problem ko, I hope I'm able to, you know, make you understand and I'm if not able to, please let me know. You can always unmute yourself and tell me. That agar koi situation ho gayi hai, there is a situation in life aur aap usi cheez ko do bande se zada logon ke pas ja ja ke vo same baate ko repeat karte ja raha hai. To check yourself because then aap us por problem ka solution nahi chahte hain. Aap us baat ko ek baseline bana ke khukko victimize karke aur sympathy gain kar raha hai. Ya to vo kisi aur ke bare me same baat ko chaar logon se bol raha hai, aap bag biting kar raha hai. So you know, again, that is also called as, you know, being a part of a conversation. Jahaan koi bat ke bhi vo aapki baat sun raha hai na, that person also is becoming a part of the conversation that is happening for a third person. So mindfully choose not to be a part of it. If somebody is coming up to you and sharing something, be very mindful about giving a solution and then cut yourself away from that thing. And if that person is repeatedly doing the same thing, be this much loving to yourself to say no to that thing. By being very polite in explaining it that sweetheart, I gave you the solution whatever it was, but now I feel exhausted and I don't want to put my energy into that thing. So and you are doing this thing to protect yourself. This is the boundary that each one of us need to make for us, for our own good. And by this, you will not become a selfish person. So don't think in that way also. I hope I am clear with this thing.
This thing I have been actually doing and thank you for reminding me this thing actually. This is very helpful and I have practically experienced this thing like the repeating thing, repeating of the negative thing and the reason then I remember you mentioning in one of the session about it like the reason, check the reason why you're repeating it. So I checked it for both the, uh, both things like negative and positive and then I figured out the solution. And then I stopped myself when it was for negative and also for happiness. If it was a happy thing, why I was doing? I checked the reason and then I continued that way.
Wonderful. I'm happy that you are, you know, able to see such shifts in your life. I'm glad. Okay, so today, no one can harm you because you refuse to believe in being hurt. You refuse to indulge in damaging emotions, no matter how justified they may seem to be. You rise above anything that attempts to make you angry or afraid. Destructive thoughts have no power over you. You think and say only what you want to create in your life and that is why, you know, even then, like when I teach spells, I always mention this thing that spells is coming from the word spelling. And imagine how powerful this whole thing is, spelling, what you spell. So be very careful of what you are speaking because you are literally creating that. You are more than adequate for all you need to do. You are one with the power that created you. You are safe and all is well in your world and this is what you are supposed to remind yourself each and every day. So if you like this thing, put I before that. All is well in my world. I am one with the power that created me. And I am more than adequate for all I need to, I need to do. Write it and paste it some way, wherever you feel comfortable next to your bed, in your diary, in your bathroom, uh, in, I mean, the inner side of your almera, wherever. Paste it, repeat it, make it as your wallpaper. Keep repeating it and then update me what happens. I will not say that you will feel a shift. I will say update me then what happens. So there's a small little meditation. Would you guys want to do that? Or do you want me to send it in the group, the recorded meditation?
Uh, I would like to do it.
Want to do it? Okay, perfect. So let's go into the meditation mode. Close your eyes and start taking comfortable, long, deep breaths. Breathe in and breathe out. Breathe in and breathe out. Breathe in and breathe out. Welcome this night. Open arms and love. Feel your power. Feel the power of the breath. Feel the power of your voice. Feel the power of your love. Feel the power of your forgiveness. Feel the power of your willingness to change. You are beautiful. You are divine. You are a divine magnificent being. You deserve all good, not just some good, but all good. Feel your power and be at peace with it for yourself. And so. Now you can just rub your palms, cup your eyes, cup your face. Thank you so much. I'm gonna send the exercises in the group and will shortly share the recorded meditation. Um, just the audio of today's, uh, today's chapter and today's session. Alright, is there anything somebody wants to share or ask?
No.
You're good. Alright. Thank you so much, guys, for joining in. I'll take your leave for today. Bye-bye.